Dalton Select Board. And I'd like to invite everyone to join us in the pledge if they're able. Bob, would you lead us?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and one God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Brittany, may we have the roll call?
Yeah.
Here.
Bob Fisher?
Here.
John Mertens?
Here.
Ed Holler?
Present.
John Boyce?
Here.
Okay, we have minutes from September 10th. And entertain a motion to accept.
I make a motion we accept a minutes from Monday, September 10th, 2018. That's present.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any revisions or count notes here? Additions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So pass. This is the time where the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda or on any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask that you do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company or institution you represent. The public address to the board will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. Questions on procedural matters may be answered by the chair or their designee. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when an agenda item is discussed by the board, please make the request at this time. This request may be granted by the board chair. Address comments to the board chair and be concise. In regard to being noticed during an agenda item, the only one that I am not going to allow the general public to be part of is item number 10, which is the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources discussion with the Select Board. It's just going to be with the Select Board and DAR that we're going to discuss. But if anyone has a comment about that, they may do so now at the beginning of the meeting under just a general address. And if not, anyone who wishes to address the board may do so at this time. Would anyone wish to address the board? Okay, seeing none, we will go on to the first item. Which is our annual Light Up the Holidays slated for December 8th, 2018. And I have a letter here which was sent to our town manager, Mr. Walto, from the Dalton Civic Arts Committee. Says, Dear Ken, we have set a date this year for the 23rd. Light Up the Holiday Parade for Saturday, December 8th, 2018, from 4:30 to 8:00 p.m. The parade will take place on Main Street, beginning at Depot Street and ending with a tree lighting ceremony at the CRA. Would you please enter into your agenda on the next scheduled Select Board meeting? Over the past 22 years, the board has written a letter to the DPW endorsing this parade, which we believe highlights Dalton's spirit. Also, please notify the Dalton Police Fire Department about these dates. Sincerely, Bob Farrell, Dalton Civic Arts Committee. Do we actually send letters to the chief? The chiefs, Dalton Police and Fire?
I think we do.
We do?
Many of them will follow the procedures we have in the past.
Okay, very good. Is there any discussion?
We make a motion.
You may do so.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the holiday parade for Saturday, December 8th, 2018.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to allow the Light Up the Holiday Parade for the 8th of December this year. Further discussion?
I think it's a great idea, again.
Yes, always is. It's a good time.
Nice to see a lot of.
Really would like to see people. And it's always well attended, even in the bad weather.
Absolutely.
So, it's a great time.
Maybe Santa Claus will bring me something this year.
Don't hold your breath, Eddie. No, I'm only kidding.
Got a lot of cold.
Clean cold.
Yeah, clean cold. Anything else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Item 7 is a continuation from our last meeting. We had our COA Director Kelly Pizzi here, as well as Peg McDonough from the VRPC. VRPC, correct. And they are here again with us. I've already been scolded about that, but we have completed a resolution with the help of both Ken Walto and Ed Holler, who wrote this up, got it on our stationery, and I'm sure that we'll approve it. But what I'm going to do, unless... Do you have copies of it, Kelly?
Not with me.
Okay. I was planning on reading it, unless you would like to?
Not me.
Okay. Just want to make the offer.
I'm with Ed.
All right. So this is a resolution adopting an age-friendly community strategy. And it says, Whereas the Select Board of Dalton, Massachusetts does hereby find as follows, whereas Berkshire County is one of the fastest aging communities in the Commonwealth, Dalton is above the Massachusetts average with approximately 50 to 60 percent of residents over the age of 50. Whereas an age-friendly community as defined in the Age Friendly Berkshire's Action Plan is a way to help older adults remain healthy, active, connected, and engaged in their community for as long as possible. It is committed to improving both the physical and social environments that support community seniors. It facilitates independence and neighborhood cohesion. Whereas collective input and guidance from local, state, and national partners has been and will continue to be vital to the development of and effective implementation of a comprehensive plan to support an aging community. Whereas the town shall support community policies for infrastructural and environmental changes that will promote active living and healthy eating among older adults. Whereas the town shall approach transportation improvements and project phases as an opportunity -- and, I'm sorry, not project -- and project phases as an opportunity to create safe, more accessible streets for all users. Whereas the town shall advocate for policies that allow for easier access to public transportation, biking, and walking. Whereas the town shall enhance opportunities for physical activity, especially for seniors, by developing joint use agreements for indoor and outdoor spaces, allowing for use after hours related to physical activity and education program. Whereas the town shall support affordable and accessible housing in locations that provide connectivity to transportation, public services, retail businesses, and social activities. Whereas the town shall encourage readily available fresh food programs, such as farmers' markets and food assistance programs. Whereas the town will sustain a vibrant workforce that is aware of issues facing older adults that will support their needs and lifestyle. Whereas the town, in conformance with its master plan, will endeavor to develop and implement a plan to improve ADA accessibility in Town Hall, including the installation of an elevator and other capital improvements to address interior conditions. Now, therefore, be it hereby proclaimed by the Dalton Select Board, Massachusetts, that an age-friendly community strategy is established as a town standard for planning and community development. I'll entertain any type of comment you may have or anyone else may have, if you wish.
Well, I just wanted to say I really appreciate the Select Boards and the town's commitment to making it an age-friendly community. When you read the statistics and how Dalton is aging, I think it's really, really important to have an environment that's going to really keep people well.
Are there projections for years down the road as for how this trend will -- this percentage of population, is it thought to increase?
Oh, yeah.
Remain the same?
The aging trend across the county is expected to continue to at least 2060. So, yes, it is expected to continue for quite some time.
Okay. I think it's great. I'm glad you brought this to our attention. It goes kind of hand in hand with some of the things that we've been doing in the area, you know, with the sidewalks down on High Street and Field Street extension by the senior center, the outdoor apparatus that you're going to be receiving through the grant that you obtained. And using that as a -- actually, it's almost a year-round thing, even if you can get through the snow, I guess.
If it's a mild day.
Yeah, mild day, yeah. But I think it's great, so. Any comments?
Just one time regarding the elevator.
Yes, sir.
As I said, I'm in full agreement with that position, but it's not a new issue with the Select Board. It was over 10 years ago. This board, I think Ken Walto was here, we actively supported placing an elevator, a three-star elevator, if you remember.
Yes.
Down in the Peak Tower.
Was part of it.
In the Town Hall, but the voters rejected it. So.
But it doesn't mean you should give up.
No, that's a little ahead. I didn't say that. Just wanted to go on record that this board hasn't been neglectful in that area.
Well, we haven't done anything in the last 10 years, I saw. So I think it might be time to keep trying. And again, that is actually an issue that is clearly brought up in the master plan and is one of the goals, and it was really set to be completed in three years. And the master plan is over two years old.
Yeah, right. Yep, they always are. Yeah, I hope we can get it to.
I think everybody's sympathetic, but the timing was kind of wrong for that elevator vote because it was grouped in with a bunch of other issues that were.
It was like $300 and $1,000.
Right. So they just rejected it, all of them out of hand, if I remember correctly.
That's correct. It was, yes.
So we are mindful that we have an egg in the egg, but it's no reason not to try again.
Very good. Yes, very good. Thank you.
We can put that at the close of the top of the list, then? What we're going to.
Put it on the board.
Do we put it on the board?
Yeah. To visualize it.
Yes.
Only took us 20 years.
Again, thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you very much.
And I'm glad we could do it.
Yes.
So I'll entertain a motion. If there's no further comments, we accept this resolution.
I make a motion that we accept a resolution for adopting an age-friendly community strategy for the town of Dalton.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We'll be sending in a copy.
Thank you very much.
Would you like one too, Peg?
I would love one.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Now we have an appointment of an alternate building inspector. And I'll read a memorandum sent by Mr. Walto to us dated today. And it's in regard to the appointment of Timothy X. Sears as alternate building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer. I hereby recommend for your ratification the appointment of Timothy X. Sears of 14 Miriam Street, Dalton, to the position of alternate building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer for an initial term expiring on June 30th, 2019. Ken, this is a yearly appointment?
Yes.
Okay. I'm also requesting you authorize to start Mr. Sears at a higher than usual rate. Step three, given his qualifications and prior experience, building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer is a salaried position at grade nine under the town's classification and compensation plan. Typically, new employees enter at step one of the seven-step plan. The minimum entry level requirement for this position is five years of experience in building construction, supervision, and design. Mr. Sears has nine years municipal experience, eight of which are at the local inspector as are at the local inspector of building commissioners level, and eight years of private sector construction management experience. His resume and background information are enclosed for further information. Thank you for your consideration of this appointment. Your -- Mr. Sears is with us tonight, and glad he could be here. And your resume is impressive.
Thank you.
And, you know, should we all go to appoint you, which I don't see why we wouldn't, but it'd be good to have you aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments before we vote? Any motion?
I make a motion we accept the appointment of Timothy Sears as the alternate building commissioner of zoning enforcement officer.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there further discussion or comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure. Thank you, Ken. Back to work.
Thanks for being here. Thank you for doing this for us.
Thanks very much.
Okay, we'll go aboard.
Thank you.
I'll take nine out of order. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Cancel that. Just cancel what I said.
Okay, cancel it. Okay. It seems like it just took place, but.
It did.
Yeah. That was a joke, small as it may be. But the Lions Club is here tonight to request permission to hold their circus in 2019. Now, we don't have any specifics in our folder as for dates, but I'm sure the representatives here tonight will be able to fill us in. And I'll give the floor to our two representatives here from the Lions Club.
Dan has given me his thumb.
Yep, he can do it.
I'm Paul Tobone. I'm the Dalton Lions Club, and we're just planning out the circus is planned for July 6th and 7th of next year. It's a Saturday and a Sunday. Going to be four shows each day. The Zerbeany Circus, the same group we had last year. We're still ironing out the costs with the public, but as far as everything else is concerned, those are the dates we'd like to have the event at the Legion grounds and.
It was a Saturday and a Sunday this year, correct? Or was it?
Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We had, yeah, we had five events, but it condensed to get down to four.
Okay.
But that's.
But it's the same outfits?
Same outfits, same group. You know, I think I have one camel and one ostrich and six dogs.
No ostriches.
No more ostriches. I'm sorry, no more ostriches.
Two kids.
But.
How did things go this year?
Very well.
Very well. But it's becoming labor-intensive, and Dan made it known tonight that it may be the last time that it gets done because it's very labor-intensive for too few people involved.
Yeah.
But that's, let aside.
That's all aside.
We're just looking for permission to do it again.
I guess we'll see what happens next year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
My wife is hurt after the last 10 years.
Yeah, for sure.
And may she hear it for another 10.
Well, how many years now?
26 years, this will be.
This will be 26 next year.
That's great. I'm glad you.
Dan used to have hair, and he was much younger.
Amen to that.
Good addition to the town's activities. And thank you for your work, because I only can imagine it is hard work. Any comments?
I need to stay out of this one because I'm a member of the Dalton Lions.
Okay. Any comments? Could I have a motion from someone other than Bob? Make a motion we approve the circus for next year from the Dalton Lions Club.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the Lions Club circus for July 6th and 7th, 2019. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for contributing to the community.
I want to thank the Dalton Fire Department and Dalton Police Department for responding so quickly to my emergency I had at my house and getting me to the hospital soon. They are an asset to the town, and we should be very, very fortunate we have such good people.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thanks, everybody.
Next on the agenda is a discussion with the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources in regard to what is formerly known as Sabarden property up off of North Street, Route 9 in our town. And I would imagine, I'm sorry I didn't introduce myself earlier, but I think we have two representatives from Mass DAR with us. And if you could introduce yourselves, that would be great.
Sure, I'm Ron Hall. The coordinator of the Agriculture Preservation Restriction Program of the Department of Ed.
And my name's Nick Patel. I'm the APR stewardship planner for Western Mass.
You're the, Nick, you're the, it's Nick, right?
Yep.
We received a letter from you.
Correct.
Okay. And in that letter, it requested or recommended that we have a meeting between your department and us with regard to this property and its use or future use. And so in regard to that, I'm going to kind of open it up to you to let us know what you want, instead of us going the other way and telling you what we want to do. I think it's better to start there.
Okay. Yeah, so we have a baseline report conducted for the property this year, which I sent with that letter. And it documented potential underutilization or abandonment of the agricultural fields on the property. And then when I.
Sorry, can I just interrupt you one second? Who, I'm just wondering who requested that?
The.
Is that just a normal thing that you do all the time, or did somebody, did we request that, or?
Uh, no, the department did primarily because we still had a few backlog baseline reports to be done for older APRs. This one had a partial one done back in like 1991, which was a couple of years after it was placed into the APR. However, there were not any photographs or color maps or anything associated with it. It was just a few like scrap maps and handwritten notes. So we did a full comprehensive one this year to get our full baseline package, which is the document report, maps, updated photos, everything.
So it just popped up this year and so.
Yeah.
It was our time. Gotcha.
Yeah, and so the, so like I said, based on the report's documentation, we sent the letter following up to that in regards to the management of the fields, that, you know, they're really supposed to be used for agricultural purposes and for commercial ag use. And so that was to notify you as the owners of that APR. And then when I did a drive-by a couple of weeks before sending the letter, I noticed that you have to note trespassing signs up, which is fine. You can do that as a landowner, but, you know, just, you know, know that it has to be used for ag purposes. Is there anything?
No, I think that was predominantly what was the message from the baseline document report we had gotten. And I think the greatest emphasis of trying to have a meeting was just to ask the board if they had questions of us and what the restriction entailed and how we might be able to assist in a manner to have those, that plan available for its intended purpose.
There are some issues, if I may start the conversation, with regard to the no trespassing signs. And that was because of the property was being used without proper permission. And so to put an end to that until we could figure out what to do, we put the signs up. Now, in addition to that, shortly after putting the signs up, that area that isn't part of the APR but is part of this tract of land was thought to be by the DEP an area that could be contaminated. We're still looking into that with petroleum products. Let's just put it that way.
The excluded.
Excuse me?
The excluded area?
Yes, yeah, that's 12 acres or whatever, maybe.
Not nine acres, maybe?
Maybe it's nine.
Nine, yeah.
The smaller part of the 100 and some odd acres that are up there. So, you're aware, that's why it was done. We haven't formally discussed how to use the pasture land, the fields, at this point in time, but it has been thought that we can always possibly lease it or put it out to bid to have it paid. But that's the proper thing, from what I understand, that a municipality can do with any property that is going to be used. It has to be offered to the larger group, you know, instead of just saying, hey, you want to do this, you know, type of thing. So, so that you know, that's why we posted it. The other thing that was in your report was a division of the land. Some of it's in Windsor, very small part of it. I personally don't understand the issue with that. Could you explain that a little bit more?
Sure. Do you want me to go? You want? Go ahead. So technically, understanding that you guys, as acquiring the land through the taking, could only do so in the town of Dalton, there was a four-acre parcel within the town of Windsor that was also part and still is part of this APR. It's just in the town of Windsor. So when it came into the APR program, it was all as one APR. And so technically, to subdivide and split the APR into different parcels, it had to be approved by MDR in order to do that.
But we can't control what another town does with property that's obtained through a tax-taking, which would be what our end of it is, is theirs. I mean, they didn't get paid for the taxes. It's their property, so this puts us in kind of a tough situation here. I mean, you can't, you can't subdivide the APR, although I believe, and I'll let Mr. Walto address this, that when it was checked into by the land court, it was said that we could. And I'm not going to comment any further on that because I don't have all the details on it as for the reasoning behind it. But when I look at the property, we're looking at two municipalities that have an interest in the same tract of land, although Windsor's is small. It's still, it's part of, we don't have a control over what Windsor does. We only have a control over what we have. And, you know, and again, I'll let, I'll let Mr. Walto speak to when we were trying to get rid of the land and sell it, we were trying to sell just what was in Dalton. So, I believe, and, you know, obviously correct.
We were, and I think I talked with Nick at the time, two years ago, when we were going to sell it. Because as far as we know, when the land court gave the town, it foreclosed the rights of redemption. That's what the land court does. Examine, you know, we have to go through this due diligence process. It all goes before the land court. And the land court forever forecloses the right of redemption by the former owners, and the town takes title to the property. And then it's in the custody of the tax title custodian, that's our treasurer, and we sell it at auction. At the time, the issue arose, and our town council is in contact with DAR council and then also the auctioneer. But right up until the point we were, we're going to sell it, right? The day that we were auctioning it, we thought we ought to be able to sell it. And then at the very last minute, we pulled it off the auction block after town council consulted with, with the auctioneer. So that's why the property's been sitting fallow these two years. I mean, I've since learned from our town council, and we had some informal conversations about it, that some communities that have land like this actually do actively manage the properties. They don't just simply sell it at a fire sale, which is what a tax auction is. They take, it's kept in the public domain, and it's managed for agricultural purposes. So that's certainly one of the things we can think about doing if we choose not to auction it.
How do they do that?
Oh, they probably put it out to bid. I didn't get the details on it, but, you know, the.
Kind of what I was referring to about.
Just what you said, John. Solicited proposals to use it for agricultural purposes. And one of the things I think the DAR could be very helpful with is technical assistance if we choose to go that route. Otherwise, it may require, if you choose to actively manage it for agricultural purposes, it probably would require a town meeting act. manage it for agricultural purposes, it probably would require a town meeting action to move it from the tax, the tax title custodian, the treasurer, to the, under the select board's jurisdiction, just like we did for the North Mountain Park property. But I don't know how we can resolve the problem with Windsor. I don't even know, is it in tax title in Windsor?
Uh, last I checked, the Windsor parcel was paid out.
Yeah. So there's, legally, there's not much Dalton can do, because we can't, I don't think we can execute taking against Windsor, nor would we want to, we'd have to pay for it. What did you say, Nick, what'd you say about the Windsor property? It's, it was taken by Windsor?
No, no, no. When I, when I checked in with the town of Windsor, back a year or two ago, they said the taxes were paid on it, so.
So the taxes were paid on the four acres in Windsor, but they were neglected in Dalton? Okay. Whatever.
And I definitely hear what you're saying, where you can't obviously take a parcel in Windsor. But just for the department purposes, we have to flag that as-
Well, then if the taxes are paid in Windsor, wouldn't that property be the same as, say, like, the city of Pittsfield owns watershed in Dalton? So wouldn't it be ours now?
No, I don't, I think, when you have a, a town can have property in another town for the purposes of having a reservoir.
Yeah.
But I don't know that we could do, we could probably legally purchase it, but we couldn't take it by eminent domain in another town. I don't think there's any legal, I don't know, I don't think there's any legal right for the town of Dalton, just to ensure they're not going to sever an APR, see?
Well, then, I don't, I don't know what, what we can do. I mean, we can't do, we can't do anything with the land.
Oh, we can certainly use it for agriculture. We can, we can either sell it, like we originally intended to, although we would be severing the APR in that sense as well, go to another owner. The APR would remain intact, but it'd be, be in two separate ownerships, obviously. If the town retains it, the same thing occurs. So there's almost no way, because the Bardens still own it in Windsor, there is no way that APR can be, remain whole unless someone else comes in and buys the property on both sides of the line.
Or we buy the Windsor property.
Or we buy the Windsor property, yeah.
What does DAR propose? Anything, or?
Well, if, if we're talking under the scenario of keeping the land in agriculture, was sort of the primary concern we had at the baseline, so keeping that land active for agriculture is the first main goal that we are looking for. In other words, find if there's a viable way you can put the bids out for agricultural purpose. And then, from a, a sales standpoint, again, I know our councils have had discussion about it, and how that would potentially play out, if it was put out through auction by the town and sold to another party. And I think that the issue there comes to the buyer has to be aware that there's this restriction there, and there's a potential cloud on the title because of the subdivision. So, from a legal standpoint, I can't say fataally, but if a person is borrowing to purchase the land, obviously, the lender might look at that as a, a cloud.
Well, the, the DAR has right of first refusal to buy it.
Correct.
Is that an interest of the DAR?
DAR does not have a funding source to purchase. DAR has the right to exercise its right of first refusal and look to assign, under that right, and-
And look to assign, you said?
Assign. And so, there, there are policies in which describes how we would receive a request under that right of first refusal. And again, those policies describe what we would be looking for. If we were to choose, one, to waive our right, which would then allow the owner to sell to the potential buyer based on the information package that they gave to us, or if a decision was made, know the department would like to seek an assignment. And it lays out in the restriction document, the timeframes in which the department could seek out a entity to try to assign it. It would be based on the same offer, parameters of the price. The idea would be more along the lines of looking at it if it is a, a entity that is going to keep the land more protected in the manner of the agricultural use.
And I did print off some copies of our right of first refusal policy guidelines that I can provide.
Okay, was, it was partly, well, I don't know, the same, same information that you're going to copy off, was included. There was, there was one of the, well, I forget, addendums to, to the initial APR agreement with Mr. Barden, that kind of stated what the right of first refusal was.
Yeah, that's the exhibit B, the right of first refusal document.
But this is something different that you have?
Yeah, this is our department policy regarding if, if you were to, say, at auction or seek bids to sell the APR property, this is our right of first refusal process of the steps that you'd have to present to the department with an offer, and et cetera.
Can we get permission from DAR to subdivide the APR?
There is a request for looking at subdivision. Again, it's a, another policy that we have, and quite often subdivisions is looking at it from the perspective of the future agricultural use. So, the idea of subdivision was the parcel could be more viable, more productive, if it was sold into separate parts than as a whole. And quite often, the intentions were, they were large tracts, and you had just the hypothetical that you had one parcel on one area of the town, and another parcel on a different area of the town, they had both productive resources. So it made sense that a subdivision from an agricultural future sale would make sense to have subdivided it and be sold separately. The difficulty, I think, with the subdivision here, is the four acres in Windsor doesn't really have much of an agricultural component. It's more of a wooded lot that was at the back end of the parcel.
Well, that's what I mean, so, why wouldn't it be easier for us just to keep ours, what Windsor do with theirs, they're still APRs, or designated APR, and they can keep it? Or, no, the, the property owner still owns it, and we can give, we can sell ours off? I mean, it would seem to me, we're only talking four acres out of 130, something like that, or 120? It just, it just would seem easier to do with that one. The only, the only other question, I'm going to stop, because I've been, I've been hogging off everything here, but the only other question I have is in your report, it said that the timber was being managed. Who's it being managed by?
Good question.
I'm pretty sure it's, I'm sure, I'm pretty sure it said that it was being managed.
Unless there was a, well, I believe the monitor spoke with you, Ken? Was that, I thought, I thought it's spoken-
Oh, all it says, it's on the page two of the, of the report, is just listing the, the property, and breaking it down in acres. And it says 100 acres of woodland, and it says it's under managed.
Yeah.
Or at least it's across from managed.
Right.
So I'm wondering by who?
I, I have a feeling that may have just been, just been in the woodland, I don't know. Could be a typo. It doesn't, usually if it says managed, the description would say next to it, like, chapter 61 forest management plan, or-
So we can, we can, I hate to use the word assume, but it looks like it's not managed at this time.
I would think, I mean, maybe there's a chapter 61 plan when Mr. Barden owned it, I don't know.
If you look carefully at page one, you'll notice I am, I am listed as the farm manager.
Ah, thank you. Farm manager, Ken Walto. So, I guess that's all I have, like I said, I, I, I had a lot of questions about it, obviously, but I'll open it up to further questions or statements.
I got a couple of questions here. Can you, do you have any examples of towns, or municipalities that have APR land, and what they utilize their APR lands for? Us?
Yeah.
Town of Greenfield?
Yep. Town of Greenfield owns an APR, I think it's 35 acres, or something like that. They currently have a nonprofit CSA farm on the property that does a really good CSA. They also provide food to the various senior centers and schools in the community as well. And then they also rent a smaller field out to a local farmer for hay.
Nick, what is a CSA?
Community-supported agriculture. So it's where you buy, like, your customers buy essentially a share in the farm. They get X amount of vegetables per week, or two weeks, and in return, they have to work X amount of hours on the farm to help support it.
That would be approved, something like that. Obviously, it's got to go by, go through you guys, and be approved through you. Do something like that. If we wanted to do like a-
I mean, we could certainly review it, but I don't know-
From a management of the agricultural side of things, of the entity, we're only concerned with what improvements might occur on the land, and if the land is actively used for agriculture. I guess from selection of who the entity might be for overseeing that farm management, we want to have a role in that. Obviously, we could assist with what sources might be out there for finding folks that would be interested in farming it.
And here's the hot button topic. How hard is it to get a piece of, of APR lifted off a piece of that property?
It is in statute that it takes a-
State legislation?
Legislation of both houses, two-thirds vote, and signed by the governor. Also, it involves the Department of Ag, finding the land is no longer suitable for agriculture. And within our regulations, it speaks to, also on the statute of compensation back on the land under an appraisal process and mitigation with the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for know that loss of agricultural land.
Okay. And then just my final question. I just wanted to make sure that no third party has moved this along. This is strictly, it was our time to get this looked at.
The baseline?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's just our time to get it looked at.
Yeah, we were, we've, we were following up on all the old APRs in the state. There was like 10 left that we had to do.
That's all I got.
If we decide to like lease this land, how do we know the value? I mean, what can we, would, it's something you're, could help us say is worth this amount of money to lease it out, or, depending on what that, I'm sure, I'm sure there's people that want to hay it, I'm sure there's people want to log it. But how do we establish a price that's fair?
Good question.
There, we do have a, a state lands program in which there are some parameters in which state agricultural land is leased at. Obviously, it provides a range, and it's just of a guide. It doesn't necessarily dictate what you need to lease it at, because you may find you have a lot of active interest in that land. And so, some of that is going to be dictated on the interest in that land.
Typically, like, is it like a five-year contract, 10-year contract, or?
I'm typically, especially farm entities that are looking to maybe invest into the resource, such as the type of soil supplements or amenities, they're looking at a cycle of minimum five years, up to 10 years. That way, they sort of see a return on that investment into the resource. We get concerned with leases that get up there beyond the 20 to 40-year period, because then it's sort of begins to get into an area that you may have transferred an, an interest in that property.
Okay. Outside, you're outside, Ken. Yes. John?
Yeah, several questions, thank you.
Right ahead.
Hey, you hit the hot button question I was going to ask. I will get back to that. But Nick, if I may call you, Nick, when you were traversing the goings on at Windsor, and you found out the taxes had been paid up to date, who's the owner of the land in Windsor?
I believe it was Mr. Barden.
Which Mr. Barden is that? The alive one?
I would assume.
Yeah, I would think so, but I'm just checking.
I don't, I don't recall, because the first-
It's not important, but somebody's been paying the taxes on the one in Windsor, but not Dalton. That's how we acquired it in the first place. Okay. My second question is, I think John touched on this. Does your department have the authority to subdivide the APR on this, or any properties?
Well, an approval has to be requested from the department. We have an approval process to request subdivision.
Subdivision of the APR, not the property?
Correct.
Okay. If this board, or the town of Dalton submitted through their attorneys, all the appropriate paperwork, paperwork, suggesting this alternative, that the APR be subdivided, would you guys support it?
Again, it would be a request that would provide the details of what is the, the shape of the subdivision going to look like. It's going to measure of, if subdivided, first of all, it's going to meet sort of the minimum thresholds. It has a separate APR to make sure that it can be its own viable, and meeting any of the thresholds we have to do statutory-wise. And then, quite often in subdivision requests, there's usually sort of a, a future identified who are the owners of those parts. Quite often, the request we get is the current owner is looking to retain one parcel, and looking to subdivide another parcel and transfer it.
But by your own admission, the four acre parcel in Windsor is virtually no value. It's just an odd, it's four acres, which isn't much by farming standards, and it has a, 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 different types of wood growing on it. It's not really suitable for logging.
And by statute, an APR has to be a minimum of five acres actively in agriculture.
Oh, I'll tell you a yes or no here. If we, because I think it's a viable option for this board. It has to be five acres now. To subdivide it?
Correct.
Okay, so the four acre parcel, that would be out? You couldn't do it?
It couldn't receive an approval.
Couldn't receive an approval. So don't waste our time.
Well, it's kind of a moot issue anyways. It's Windsor's property.
No, subdivide the APR yet.
You mean our APR?
The whole APR. The APR is, it stretches across the town lines. And divide the APR, so part of it's in Windsor-
But you can't take off less than five acres, I think it's-
Well, you just said that, but they didn't say it before. So it has to be five acres to be considered for an APR.
Correct.
So, subdividing the APR to a four acre parcel in Windsor cannot be done.
Not under our program statute.
Okay. So we'd be wasting our time to try to-
I see what you're saying.
Yeah. I'm trying to follow up on what you were suggesting, which I thought was an appropriate suggestion.
So we can't? Go ahead, John, if you have a question.
Ah, I have one, I forgot what it was now. Ah, just a comment. You reimbursed Mr. Barden, I think it was 35 years ago, for that acreage. And now you expect the town of Dalton to manage it for agricultural uses. It'd be my opinion that the MDR should recap, should compensate the town of Dalton.
In what fashion?
Because we assumed, we assumed an APR, and you expect us to manage it?
Well, the restriction that's on the property that had been put on it was there and carries forward with the land.
Yes, it is there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it matters how you obtain the property, it's what you do.
I know, I just toss it out there. Think we should be compensated in his practice. Mr. Barden, what?
Well, I think, I think we're kind of in a, in a, between a rock and a hard place here. Well, let's get back to, you know, we're in violation of your rules and regulations by not utilizing the land, according to your report. Right? So, what do we have to do to make you happy?
I, I think you had asked good questions, and Ken had brought it up about either putting it out to a bid, bid, for seeking a lease, or potentially looking at you, you know, looking at other farming endeavors on it.
But we will not be able to sell it, no matter what, because of that four acre piece that's-
that's in Windsor that can't be taken off and a subdivide Dalton and Windsor.
I would, I would say not, no matter what. It just clouds the title.
Right. If we sold it, we'd have to disclose the possible defect in title.
Okay. I got a gut feeling that there's probably somebody that wants to buy that four acres in Windsor and would look to buy it. Just a gut feeling.
I'm trying to agree with you, Mark. Cloud or no cloud. If they pay cash for it, which typically happens at auctions, and no banks are involved and subsequent, it subvertates the clouded title issue.
Do we have time constraints on what we do?
I mean, it's...
At this point?
You're getting towards the end of the growing season right now, so I would say we don't expect you to manage the hay fields for the remainder of this year.
What's the penalty if we don't get something next year growing? What, what happens? Is there a financial penalty?
No, there is not, there is no penalty or fee. The aspect of abandonment and so forth is really the idea, we're looking at working with the landowners on how to not allow it to get to such a derogation that it can't be continued in agriculture use. It's when it gets to that scale, then the only route that the department has is through a legal litigation. And that's not something that's imminent, but the biggest thing is our desire is to work with landowners early on, so we're not at that stage, and then it's more confrontational.
I would like to see it, obviously, you know, staying as agricultural. I have one other question. Ken, are we paying insurance on this property, the town?
Typically, all the properties we acquire are through tax title. We insure.
So we have, we're incurring costs just having this?
I don't know if it's an extra cost.
Okay.
I'd have to check.
Okay.
It might be a blanket on the top property.
This plan has to be written and submitted to you?
As far as...
The DAR, what we're gonna do?
I mean, in a written form would be sufficient for our purposes, and if we have questions, we would be able to follow up on that, would you?
Now, as for the woodlands, let's forget about the hay or the fields. As for the woodlands, which is the majority of the acreage up there, a hundred acres, is it possible to have several foresters come and give us a price on what they think they would want or to give us for using the timber or cutting the timber on that land? Because they do come in and they'll cut timber, and they'll pay the property owner for what timber they take. Is that something that can be done? As long as we do it, we do it on a municipal, in a municipal way as for putting out bids. We get three foresters or how many, put it out and say, hey, come on and bid on our hundred acres and let us know what you think it's worth if you log it.
Yeah.
So...
So that is definitely something that you can do.
Okay.
Under the definition of agriculture in chapter sixty-one, forest products are listed as a definition, so you can certainly request foresters, you know. We would obviously recommend a forest management plan for the property, and then I'm sure based on the acreage and what's up there, you'd need to file, or the forester would need to file a cutting plan with DCR and all that.
Right. The, the hay fields or the pasture land, I think we, we really kind of have to do our due diligence and wait for our testing, whatever you want to call it, on the property that we're thinking might be contaminated with petroleum products because it's adjacent to, although not part of the APR, it's adjacent to the APR fields. And I may be stretching it a bit, but if it's infiltrated into those fields, which is downhill or downhill where we think might be contaminated, do we want to use it for hay? I don't know. It's just putting it out there, so. So I would think that until we get that resolved, we may not be able to have in that section the ability to do anything. Now, the other section across the street, that's part of it.
Yep.
We could do something with that.
Yep.
Because that's separated.
Correct.
So, you know what I'm getting at?
Yeah, yeah. And again, the aspect of us here sitting with you is that's good, sound planning, knowing your resource and how it affects your decisions on how you want to manage the land. We're not here to influence that. We're just kind of saying, show us that there's a plan on what you're doing and how that's moving forward.
Okay.
And from the baseline standpoint, again, there was just this emphasis, there appears not to be this activity of agriculture going on. So it's a question that we have to raise and bring back to the landowners and ask them, what's your plan? What's the reason? I mean, there are plans that are out there that works with NRCS and, I guess, Natural Resource Conservation Service with USDA that talks about some rotational or programs to enhance the, the resource. So there might be a reason to engage them from an aspect of looking at what's the resource from a nutrient mannes standpoint and what's some of the good uses of the land.
And even going further on that regarding the contamination if you, issue, if it is determined that it has seeped in to the APR land, there are certain plans in place that hay could be taken for, you know, non-consumption purposes, so maybe like construction hay or something like that.
I did an internship once with the Soil Conservation Services. Is this something that we can request for them to come in and look at this and give us options of what we can do agriculture-wise with this?
It, it would be worth looking into. I'm not sure how they...
I mean, there's a local office in Pittsfield.
Yep. I'm not sure if they, I think you can request technical assistance through them. I don't know regarding like any farm bill programs or funding, if municipalities can apply for that anymore or not. I think in years past, they could. I don't know offhand, but it's certainly worth inquiring. And maybe UMass Extension.
One, one other thing I just, just realized in your report, you were, you had mentioned that the boundaries of the property are not well-designated. If that's the case, how do we designate them? We have to post it? We have to say this is ours? I mean, we're not gonna put a fence around the property, you know, or...
Right. Now, that would be probably, I'm trying to look back here. That would be from the monitor's notes.
It may be...
It might be that a full survey of the property does not exist, or perhaps the boundaries aren't marked, maybe perhaps the forested boundaries, which would either be, if you do decide to do a forest management plan, the forester could mark the boundaries, or you could put posted signs up.
Yeah, because in the deed, it, it looks like it's well-documented as for what those boundaries are. Of course, you've got to measure it and do whatever. But going by that, I mean, to have it surveyed, that's an incredible cost, I would imagine, with a hundred and forty acres.
Yeah, this, this is, you're referring to the, our property boundaries marked, and it says no, which is generally, we would, we would view marked boundaries as either posted signs if it's open fields, or if there's active fence lines that designate the property line, or if the woodlands are blazed.
Yeah, the woodlands, I don't know, I don't know if they're blazed or not. I've been up in that area, but I just wanted to know how we have, and that is something that we have to do in our plan.
Not necessarily. It's more, this is, this report basically serves our purposes and your purposes as the landowner for what's on the ground on the property, making you aware that...
Yeah, it's not necessarily a negative thing. It's just pointing out that this was not available when the monitor was out there to easily observe.
I'm just wondering if they were ever marked. That's all. You know, they may never have been marked.
Right. I mean, I wouldn't be...
Since ninety-one.
Right. I mean, if, I don't know if they actively managed the woodlands or not. I would think if they did, then the boundaries at one time would have been...
Yeah.
Blazed, but, you know, probably wore off and...
Okay. Further questions, John?
One more question, Ken. Gentlemen, if the town of Dalton opted for the legislative remedy here and instead asking for the APR to be divided between our property in Dalton and the adjoining land in Windsor, would the Department of Agriculture actively oppose us?
If you were seeking a release of the restriction?
No, just have it divided.
The, the subdivision request is internally through our department.
No, but it seems though we wouldn't, and you already made it pretty clear, we're not gonna get anywhere with that because of the five-acre limitation or maximum. If we petition the legislature to remedy this situation, would the Department of Agriculture oppose us?
Again, I, I've not experienced a legislation where it would be subdividing a restriction. Our main concern would be a release of restriction, and often the department has to take the stance that, you know, we, we don't want any loss of agriculture because of its public purpose of maintaining as much of that activity. But subdivision, I, I guess I can't honestly answer what that outcome would be because I don't know of a situation where that has been requested in the past.
Right. This could be your first.
Correct.
Thank you.
We have to sign this report, correct? In signing it, it's stating that we, we acknowledge the findings.
Yeah, what, what was, what was written in the report appeared to be accurate upon your account, basically, and acknowledge the findings.
Who, who would sign it? Town manager or select board?
That was...
Or the farm manager?
I mean, technically, as the town, that's why I mailed it to the select board, but I did copy Ken on the, the letter as well because I had previous communications with him, and he was listed as the farm manager, so I think that's your decision.
Would he be, would he be more appropriate?
That was booed in.
Well, I mean, his name's on the document already, and, you know...
Honestly, I don't know that it matters from our...
It's a representative of the town.
Okay.
It can't be a decision.
So, okay, that's fine. That's fine. Further questions? Thanks for your time and going through the third degree with us, but there were a lot of questions, and I think we have a, a better picture of what's going on and what we need to do. And I'm sure that we can reach out to you by phone or email.
Yeah, please, please do.
At any point in time. So... Nick, you're local?
South County? Yeah, I live in Lee.
Right.
And I'm, but I work out of the Amherst office, so.
Thanks. We appreciate the invite.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you'd like, do you want copies of the right of refusal policy?
Yeah, and also, whatever the forms we were talking about, the request, even though we can't request a subdivision?
Oh, the subdivision policy?
Yeah, can we see that?
Yeah, I can. Is it easier if I just email it to Ken?
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be great. That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Actually, could you give this to me? Do you want to keep this one? I'll keep it in the main folder. Okay, traffic commission has a bunch of communiques for us. I'll go over one at a time. And the first one is request by citizen for four-way stop at Pleasant Street and Raymond And... John? Yes, sir. Did you just hear me out for this? I'd like to table these because I'd like Mr. Filio to be here. I have questions on other things. I'd like, I'd like to wait on this because I requested his presence here at the meeting. Okay. I, I don't have a problem with that. Anyone have a problem with that?
No, this sounds like a good idea.
Okay. I don't believe, we don't have to vote on a table, do we?
You should vote to table. It's a not-better discussion.
Okay, okay. Have a motion?
I move we table all the discussion on the Dalton Traffic Commission.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there further discussion on that matter? All in favor? Oppose? Rependence? Okay, we'll put that on for next agenda, as long as Mr. Filio can be here.
Thank you.
Okay.
Keep the same paperwork, ready? I'm gonna do it.
Might as well. Actually, I'm gonna go through all this stuff. We have to sign the resolution before we all go.
Okay.
And then Ken will sign. Oh, wait a second, we have to back up and agree to have Ken sign the DAR report. Designate him as the signatory for the report. Farm manager. You can use the word farm manager, too.
Farm manager. We're gonna have a milking bee after the session is done. I make a motion that we have our farm manager, Mr. Walto, sign off.
I'll second that.
On the DAR report?
On DAR report. I'll second that.
Motion's been made for Mr. Walto to sign off on the DAR report. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Ooh.
Yeah, okay. All right, so that's tabled. Which brings me, no. Sorry, I have my stuff out of order. Okay, Wacona School Building Committee. There, there hasn't been another meeting, but there will be meetings on the eleventh of October. Three PM is gonna be the working group, and at four-thirty PM is gonna be the general school committee meeting. It's at Wacona, it's in the library, it's, both are open to the public. School committee, there's nothing to report. However, there is a meeting this Thursday at seven PM. I wanna say it's at Beckett-Washington. I'm almost positive it's in Beckett-Washington, at Beckett-Washington School. But double-check the meeting notice on the CBRSD website. That starts at seven PM. Getting back to the school building committee, Mr. Bishop had a question about peaked roofs. So I'm gonna give you the answer. And this, the answers are from the, the architect and from the project manager, okay? And in regard to flat roofs, I'm just gonna read directly from this email that I received. Why flat roofs are okay? We will spend some time at the upcoming building committee meeting to elaborate on this. So it would be important, if you do have a question on it, to, to attend. But here are some of the main points. First, flat roofs are not really flat. They are low-slope roofs that pitch to drain, and today's standards are that the pitch is significant to avoid standing water. The technology of materials is significantly improved from the tarn gravel roofs of years ago. Manufacturers now provide warranties of up to thirty years. For buildings of the scale and configuration, flat roofs are the, are the most appropriate choice. Slope roofs would be significantly more expensive and would create excessive unusable attic space that would also increase operating costs to heat and ventilate. Structurally, the roofs will be designed to exceed the building codes to minimize any concern about snow loads or the need to shovel roofs regularly. Flat, low-slope roofs provide extensive area for rooftop solar panels. The alternative slope, the alternative slope roofs do not ensure that there will be, there will not be leaks. Valleys, gutters, and dormers are all problematic to detail and construction, to construct, to, to detail and construct properly. Sloped roofs have a safety and maintenance issue with snow and ice sliding off onto sidewalks and parking areas. So in general, those are the reasons why. All right? Now, I may not have answered your, your question totally, but that's what I got back, that's what I got back from them. I will be meeting with the Green Dalton Committee. I will be meeting with the Green Dalton Committee.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow at 4:00 PM in the Crane Room?
Yes.
Crane Room meeting. And along with me will be Tom Callahan, who is the co-chair of the Wacona School Building Committee, along with Jason Deon, who is the facilities manager for the district, to answer questions that you may have. So, that's on tab for tomorrow, and like I said, the next meeting of Wacona School Building Committee will be October 11th. Okay, that's my report. The Who's House, real quick, in your items for future agendas, there were a number of things that I listed in the Who's House long-range additions. Now, I just wanted to let you know, and this is very quick, that I gave Mr. White, George White, the paperwork to apply for the state directional sign or tourist sign. And once, and I don't know if everyone remembers that paperwork that was in our box. It's lengthy, it has questions that we can't answer, so they're going to take care of it. The only problem that we may have, and I don't perceive it being a real problem, is the cost, which I believe was $250, you know, to submit it and get the sign, the state will put it up and they'll have something to show people on Main Street that, hey, the Who's House is down that road, five tenths of a mile, or whatever it is, three tenths of a mile. So, that's in the works. As we go on in time, we'll do, I'll give you updates on the other stuff, and maybe we can work on the other items that I have listed. But right now, the state road directional sign is in the works. Okay. All right, Ken, you're on, Town Manager update.
The main thing I want to talk to you about tonight is the purchase and sale agreement for the streetlights. The, we're moving towards an install date of the third week in November. Becky Slick, Richard, and David Wazowski had a, sitting on a conference call last Friday to select the vendor of the streetlights and the installer of the streetlights. And it's a company called Gray Bar that's going to provide the streetlights, and a company called Pine Ridge that will be the installer of the streetlights. And we're refining the cost, the budget for the installation of the streetlights. So at this very moment, the main thing we have to consider here is the purchase and sale agreement with EverSource, and you have that in front of you, it was in your packet. Now, one of the things I regret to inform you is that these agreements are non-negotiable. And they have one set agreement that all towns sign, except for very minor things, we can't negotiate the terms and conditions of the agreement. We had several conversations with Town Council, who told me that over and over again, and then he finally said to me, if you don't believe what I'm saying, call their council directly and ask them, he said, I've tried to change the terms and conditions of these agreements, they won't change them. So, I did that, and their council agreed to, he said, you're represented by council, I can't talk to you, which I know, but I said, well, our Town Council told me to call you directly because, you know, I didn't want to accept the fact that you guys wouldn't negotiate these agreements. He said, no, we won't, and that's the simple fact, because we don't want a bunch of different agreements with each community, we want one standard agreement. So, except for the very minor details, you either, we either have to accept this agreement or not move forward, because if we don't order the streetlights and I'll get the purchase and sale agreement in place, this won't happen. And we probably have favorable prices, particularly on the install, because we're in a consortium that includes Pittsfield, and Pittsfield has 5,000 lights. So it's Pittsfield, Dalton, Sunderland, and Williamsburg, we're all going together.
Oh, that's one good thing.
Right, that is a good thing, and the bid for the install is slightly lower than we estimated.
The install, I'm looking over the, the, yeah, town meeting, explanation.
Yeah, I've got the budget in here, and that has been refined, it's late this afternoon, and I didn't print it out. But you can see the purchase of streetlights shows at 167,000, that's going to be 160,000, it's the latest number we have from EverSource. And the installs down to 55,000. I boosted the contingency so that it still comes out about $99,000, and I think we should still request $100,000, up to $100,000 in borrowing, although I'm fairly certain we're going to come in less, but we don't want to get ourselves caught short here.
Questions for Ken or Thomas? Doug? You need a approval to go into the agreement?
Yes, you should approve the purchase and sale agreement as...
For you to sign and...
As presented, yeah.
And execute the agreement, okay? Whenever you're ready.
Okay, never mind, I'll see. I make a motion that we enter into the purchase agreement and have Ken sign up for us.
I'll second that.
For the streetlights, I'm sorry.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded, then we allow Ken to go into the agreement to, with EverSource, to purchase the, our streetlights. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Resentations? Okay.
We have a purchase order for the actual fixtures, the new lights, put in motion, it takes almost nine weeks just to get the lights. So, we've got to, we have to get that moved. The old doll and hide demolition has been awarded to Ritter &amp; Partore, which is the low bidder, and I've awarded the base bid and the alternates, but the alternates contingent upon a positive town meeting vote on Monday. So, if the town meeting doesn't vote, it will allow us to use some of the money for those two things, they're just going to be deleted out of the agreement.
Question on this, all the demos, has that been deemed hazardous material, or is it just...
It looks, we thought they were going to demolish it all and take it all the way as head of some materials, but it looks right now like they're going to take some materials out before they demolish it. Just a couple of notes on other smaller, smaller projects, we are going to be soon replacing, we had an appropriation that's been sitting for a while to replace the carpeting in Town Hall, not so bad in here, but we're going to replace all of it with new carpet, carpet tiles that look something like this. That's something we had to put to the side as we went through a change in building superintendents. So, that's on its way.
Similar to what we did in the library?
Yeah, very similar to libraries, yeah, carpet tiles, about that, same kind of colors, and it pretty well matched what we've got here.
Good.
And there was one other thing, but I forgot what it was. Special Town Meeting, you've got that information in front of you, I'm going to be refining it, there's a finance committee meeting Thursday night, it's 6:30, and I'll refine this for that, but it's going to look pretty much the same, the numbers aren't going to change. And if there are no questions about that, I finish my report for this evening.
Well, I just, I just have a question with regard to the old doll and puppet. And I know you've probably answered this a hundred times, but I can't remember, the drainage for Walker Brook is going to remain the same, or are we going to enlarge?
Do we, do we... That's a, that's a good question, and it's a complicated answer.
And I know, I thought we were going to, or we have to enlarge the pipe from Glenan Avenue down to Main Street for it to drain appropriately?
There's, we are adding some drainage, if you look on the little drawing that's attached to the Town Meeting information, you'll see a drain line that go, if you look at the parking lots for the senior center, you'll see a drain running through the center of the green space, and it goes right into the existing drain there. You'll see a drain cutting across, creating a triangle at the bottom of that picture, that's the 42-inch drain that exists. We're going to put a new drain line in, and that's going to hit the existing drain, and the way the layout of this lot is the water's going, that is the low point on the lot where that drain runs right through the low point, and water will tend to pond there. That's the first piece. The second is, so we are not touching, though, except for installing this drain that I've just pointed out, we are not improving or otherwise changing the existing drainage system. But, the application we filed with MEMA three years ago already is still alive, and they've asked us twice for more information, and they've submitted a third request. It gets somewhat complicated because part of the cost-benefit analysis relied on the fact that the building was still standing and would have entailed considerable damage had it flooded, but now we're taking the building down, so it kind of changes the whole scenario. So, the Mass Emergency Management Agency, I had a conversation with Dan Filio and I a couple of weeks ago, and they've offered to help us answer these federal questions because they would like to see the town get the grant. So, we're going to give it the old college try and see if we can't satisfy their concerns. Part of that is looking at ways we might be able to lower the cost of the improved drainage system, because that was a million bucks, of which the town would be responsible for a quarter of it. So in order to make the cost-benefit analysis work, we're going to have, again, look at different ways to accomplish the same goal. And I've talked with our engineers about that, but we haven't advanced it beyond that point, so that's where that stands.
So basically, it's in the works, and we're not going to really do any grant modifications until we know about the grant?
That's, that's right.
Okay. Okay, anything else, Ken, for your...
No.
Okay. Items for future agendas. I'm taking off the state road directional sign for the Who's House. Mark, I'm sorry, I forgot to put the crosswalk lights on here.
We have Chief Filio in back, there's a dead on there.
Okay, so that's, our next meeting is the 9th?
Yes.
October 9th?
Tuesday.
Right, Tuesday, October 9th. Right, okay. So, you're set for the master plan?
Yes.
Ken?
I will be, yes.
No, no update on the Airbnb thing?
No, no, just...
Okay. All right, is there anything else anyone would like added to the list?
I think we need to put the APR land, what to do on there, with it.
I think that that's something, if I'm just speaking off the top of my head, that maybe over the winter, a couple of us can work out a rough draft and maybe what we want to do with the property, or what we can do, and see, get something started, something on paper.
I'm good with that.
Okay, well, we'll discuss that at one of the meetings, depending on when we have time to do it, soon, but probably not next meeting. I can't, I can't if the agenda allows. Anything else on the items?
Yeah, just one thing, Ken, I mean, you were speaking of the Who's House, it would kidnap my memory.
Yep.
To catch and refresh it, where we left the White House. I believe we authorized the demolition of that building, but then we didn't pull the trigger.
Right, at the last Town Meeting, the town authorized selling the house for affordable housing.
Yeah.
So we have to get a, when we carve out some time, we'll get together an offering.
So we can't demolish it?
No, not right now.
Okay.
I thought we were going to talk to HUD about that or something.
No, to Habitat.
Habitat, that's a...
Right, and it's one of the things that, that is kind of on the back burner, they have to be written up to submit the proposal, and Becky, Rebecca Slick has to do it along with Ken, and these other things will just take priority. So maybe over the next couple, two, three months, maybe we can start something.
We'll be back in the way.
Okay. I'll, I'll put it down just as a reminder, but I don't know when it would be on the agenda, okay? Anything else?
Yeah, we make any progress with the junk car thing?
That I don't know. That would be something Ken would know, maybe.
I don't know.
Has it been referred downstairs?
I don't think so.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we start there, refer it downstairs, and then we'll go from there?
Mm-hmm.
Anything else before I move on? Okay, remarks on the Select Board. You got anything? Which brings us to announcements. Special Town Meeting will be held Monday, October 1st at 7:00 PM at Nessus Regional Middle School, and there are two articles on the warrant. Tax Collector's Office, reminder that the sewer bills are due October 1st, 2018. Board of Health, two flu clinics in Dalton, September 25th, 3:00 to 6:00 PM at Craneville School, and October 1st, 1:00 to 3:00 PM at the Dalton Senior Center. The Fitch Who's House is now open from, is now open through October, on Saturdays, 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM. I hold office hours by appointment in the Select Board Office at the Town Hall. For further information, please call 413-684-6111, extension 11, or at my home at 413-684-2526. The Veterans Office, Veteran Agent Office Hours are Wednesday from 8:30 AM to 11:30 AM at the Town Hall, and from 11:40 AM to 1:30 PM at the Senior Center. Services for the Dalton Veterans are now available Monday through Friday through the North Adams Veterans Services Department, call 413-662-3040. Public Power is the town supplier for the Municipal Electric Aggregation Program. You will see that name as a supplier of electric, of electricity on your EverSource bill unless you have another supplier. To opt in or out of the program, go online to colonialpowergroup.com/dalton, or Public Power at 1-800-830-2944. Their Conservation Commission is looking for new members. How many members?
One.
One?
We can have some associates, too.
Okay. If interested, please contact the Town Manager's Office at 684-6111, extension 11. The Dalton Beautification Commission is seeking volunteers to assist in maintaining the commission's established garden spaces in the community. If interested, please contact the Town Manager's Office at 684-6111, extension 11. Please note that Dalton's official meeting postings, agendas, and minutes can be viewed at mytowngovernment.org/01226. State Representative Paul Mark holds office hours at the Dalton Town Hall, 462 Main Street, in the Callahan Room on Tuesdays from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, with the exception of the third Tuesday of each month. On the third Tuesday, office hours are 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Town Hall, and from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM at the Dalton Senior Center. You can reach his office at his district number, which is 413-464-5635. The Building Inspector Office Hours are Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and Tuesday, 8:00 AM to 12:30 PM. I declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation, negotiating position of the public body.
I move we go into an executive session to conduct a strategy session in preparation for litigation.
I'll second that.
And not return to open session.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, roll call vote, Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
We are in adjournment for a few minutes.